...regular city council meeting of August the 5th, and I will call this meeting to order. We had, um, I would like to ask Steve Page if he could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, Madam City Clerk, could we have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Henley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Present.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Here.
Mayor Harrington?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, City Manager, would you give us a report on the closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harrington. We had a closed session with the City Council about labor negotiations, and we received direction from the Council, nothing to report out.
Thanks so much. Um, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve?
Say it again.
Roll call.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, and now it's time for public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, unless otherwise permitted, under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the merits of the matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the City Council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Council consideration. Upon being acknowledged, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone, and begin by stating and spelling your name and giving your address. Is there anyone who wanted to make public comment?
Good evening. My name is Deborah Dado, D-A-D-O, and I live at 1290 Bragg Street. On January 29th, 2018, the City Council tasked the Traffic Safety Committee to review the operation of the Lodge's loading dock and work with the hotel to identify options for improvement. The city was to begin that process 60 to 90 days later. As of today, 553 days have passed. That's over a year and a half, and nothing has been done. I ask that this direction be followed at this time. The Lodge has been a bad neighbor. We've asked the city for help in dealing with them for 18 years. Train Town has been a bad neighbor. Likewise, the city has done nothing to try to bring them into compliance with noise and parking issues. Now, a 48-unit apartment building is going to be added to an already poorly managed, overcrowded part of town. I wonder how the Lodge and the Train Town will function without being able to use our streets for their business. Thus far, no mitigation measures have been discussed. Since you have not felt the need to do so until now, I respectfully request that a traffic safety evaluation be completed before the ground is broken for the apartments. Closing your eyes will not make this problem disappear. Um, if you want to get any more information on the conditions near the Lodge, feel free to go to sonomagateway.org, or we also have a Facebook page, Sonoma Gateway. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment on an item not appearing on the agenda?
Good evening. George Thompson, 311 Nicoley Lane, Sonoma, California. I'm also the Chair of the Culture and Fine Arts Commission. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, about the City Party, I thought it was a great success this year. Wanted to, uh, say thank you to Lisa Jansen for doing a great job. It's funny, as the Chair of this commission, I, a lot of the general public think they can just come up and say whatever they want to me, whenever they want. And, uh, I got a lot of feedback about the City Party, both good and bad. I'm not going to go into that, but I would like to suggest that perhaps the Culture and Fine Arts Commission would have a little bit more say in the, uh, in the makings of the, uh, City Party and some of the details, some of the, uh, nonprofits that are invited to participate, as well as the bands that are chosen. Um, I myself had a great time, uh, so I know that I'm speaking here a little bit from, uh, voices that I heard. I also want to say that I'm excited to, uh, on October 6th, I'm bringing Peestown to Sonoma. I don't know if you know what Peestown is, but Peestown is an ongoing event that's been in Sebastopol for about 10 years, and it's Jim Corbett's baby, and I'm going to read you what Peestown is because I'm excited that it's coming to Sonoma. "Peestown is a virtual place where lovers of peace gather, as a community to incubate and promote peaceful coexistence, kindness, and joy." Something we desperately need in our country right now. "As we join in this community and come to understand the principles of peace, we create a community that lives and breeds peace. You become a citizen of Peestown when you declare yourself to be one by signing up on the form below, which you can find on the Peestown website. We will keep you inspired and fill your heart and mind with beauty, love, and joy. We would be glad to welcome your heart, mind, and soul to our community." That's going to happen on October 6th. I'm working this out with Lisa Jansen. It's not a city-sponsored event, by the way. It's a Jim Corbett event. Jim Corbett's also known as Mr. Music. So he's going to bring live music to Sonoma Plaza, October 6th. It's going to be an afternoon event, about four, four or five hours long. So I'm just putting it out there. A little Peestown for Sonoma. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Good evening. Raj Ayer, that's R-A-J, first name, last name A-Y-E-R, Picket Street, Sonoma. I'm here to speak about the Lodge and its errant behavior for the last 18 years, as my neighbor, Deborah Dado, said. TOT contributions to our city's operating budget, to our employee retirement obligations, don't constitute an exemption. They don't constitute a free pass to be exempt from absolutely shocking behavior, that is, um, by avoiding pre-existing permit obligations, violating city code, blatantly deteriorating our city neighborhood. We saw massive displays of giant, that's full of soiled linen, barely within, uh, 50 feet of Broadway last week, which I brought to the city's attention, and thus lower neighboring property values. It pains me to say this, ladies and gentlemen, but our city's failure to enforce pre-existing permit obligations since 2001, and the department or the committee's failure to initiate a traffic safety study 553 days after you ordered it to do so, is incomprehensible. It represents, in my opinion, again, regretfully, an institutional bias against residential property owners. That would be inconceivable had these offenses been occurring for 18 years, anywhere east of Broadway, especially along its northern reaches. So I call in here, for public safety reasons first and foremost, please require the hotel to relocate its loading dock to within the interior of the property, and please develop a new ordinance that will severely restrict heavy vehicles from parking on Clay Street. Buses, large delivery trucks, jackknifed, especially as we've seen for years now. I would be personally happy to patronize the Lodge when we all see it to be in sustainable compliance. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Ken Brown, 1396 Lubec Street in the city of Sonoma. I too am a neighbor of the Lodge, and, I mean, the comments that preceded me are, are real and heartfelt. And the city needs to do something. The Lodge wants something from the city now for their expansion and their fancy chef. And the city has an opportunity to bring these issues back to the fore, and encourage the Lodge by law to follow them. So I hope that you do that. I actually went to the beach, and my wife drove, and it was a wonderful experience. I don't think I'll be doing that again for another 10 years.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and, um, are there any?
Mayor Harrington, maybe, can I just make a brief update, since folks were speaking about the Clay Street parking and the, so just some updates. Um, I just want to convey to neighbors that staff is working on this, on the, where, as Council knows, our new Public Works Director started in October and been getting up to speed on a whole variety of things the last 60 days. David Store has had conversations with county staff about Train Town, and also been researching the conditions, et cetera. He's had some conversations with the Lodge. Um, we, um, our, our engineering staff is getting some options to understand, so we are looking at bringing something forward to traffic safety. Uh, so I just want to convey that there is, has been active work in the last 60, 90 days, and we look forward to bringing something forward shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. That's helpful. Are there meeting dedications?
I do have a dedication. I'd like to dedicate this evening to James Delbert Nelson, actually referred to in Sonoma as Jim. In 1963, as a 19-year-old college student, Jim was accepted into the Peace Corps and served in India for two years, where he helped to create one of India's first commercial poultry industries. He returned to college where he met his wife-to-be, Barbara. Jim and Barbara were married in, uh, 1967. Following their nuptials, newlyweds drove the length of Route 66 in Jim's MG to San Jose. And if anybody knows Jim Nelson, you knew he had to drive an MG. In 1969, Jim and Barbara, actually, they both were accepted into the Peace Corps. They moved, uh, many years later to Sonoma, and he, he, Jim, I believe, and Barbara will be remembered there. They live, um, near Montini and Overlook, and they were really docents for those pieces, for those, uh, properties here in Sonoma. If there was ever a meeting, they were the ones that helped to get the goats out there, to clean the fields up. He did a lot of, he and Barbara did wonderful things. So, um, Jim is survived by his wife of 52 years, Barbara, his three daughters, Andrea Nelson, Pat Stanley, the husband, Monica Mendel, Seth Mendel, uh, husband, and Claire Sands, Victor Sands, and his three grandchildren who he dis, if you meet him, met him anywhere in Sonoma, he would always talk to you about being busy with his grandchildren, and whom he adored, Evelyn Mendel, Samantha Mendel, and Lucas Sands. I personally will miss this man because he was really a gentleman and really cared about Sonoma. He's one of those rare jew, jewels for, um, for the city of Sonoma. Also, um, you, um, here in Sonoma, many people who know me, and thanks to the Council and the city, my sister passed away a couple, a week or so ago, and I would just like to say thank you for receiving so many condolences regarding my sister. Well, my husband and I are going to be driving up to, um, up to, uh, Washington to, for her memorial service, and, um, it's, you know, like all of us, we have our family members, and she is going to leave a, a, an empty spot in all of our lives. And so I just wanted to extend my thanks to everyone who wished me, uh, their condolences here, the City Council and the people here in the city. I appreciate it, and, uh, so I would, um, my sister's name is Andrea Ann Castro. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Cook?
Well, Mayor Harrington, uh, last week, we had a moment of silence here for the, uh, people of Gilroy. And I'd like to have another, uh, moment of silence for Austin, or for El Paso, Texas, and Dayton. Um, it seems like we're having a lot of these moments of silence, and it's really sad, and hopefully, uh, something will change, but I would like to dedicate a, a moment of silence.
Of course. It'd be wonderful if we never had to have one of those again. And with that, we will move on to our, the presentation portion of our, uh, City Council meeting, and our first presentation is a recognition of the Sonoma Raceway on their 50th anniversary. And so I'd like to, um, make a few comments before I ask Steve Page to come forward, um, on that. Sonoma Raceway is celebrating its 50th anniversary season in 2019. The Sonoma Valley Facility hosted its first full season of racing in 1969. There are major events at Sonoma Raceway, as we all know, but also they generate good jobs and significant economic activity in the Sonoma Valley. Sonoma Raceway is home to a motorsport industrial park where more than 70 businesses and their employees operate on a daily basis. The driving programs offered at Sonoma Raceway include training to help young people and others become safer drivers on public roads. Speedway Children's Charities, the charitable arm of Sonoma Raceway, has distributed more than $6.4 million to youth-serving nonprofit organizations since 2001. Sonoma Raceway hosts annual community events, including a Thanksgiving food drive, holiday toy drive, and children's Christmas party, a high-speed blood drive, and the STEM gravity race car challenge. The Raceway also donates thousands of tickets to Northern California nonprofit organizations each year. Sonoma Raceway is setting an example for its industry also in adopting sustainable business practices, including solar power generation, aggressive recycling, and water conservation. Over the years, Sonoma Raceway has been a magnet for international events, such as Michelin's Challenge, um, and the Shell Eco Marathon, promoting the future of sustainable mobility, and also giving college students the opportunity to build eco cars. And if you ever have a chance to go to that event, it's tremendous to watch all these kids and the cars they've built do the laps, um, at the Raceway. And as everyone who lives in Sonoma knows, Steve Page, who I'd like to come forward now, um, has really made the racetrack what it is today, and is such a wonderful part of the community, and I know that, um, there are other council members who want to make comments, and, uh, before we give you a moment to talk about the racetrack. Councilmember Aggermonte?
Well, I've had the pleasure of working with Steve on different, different projects here in the city of Sonoma, and all I remember is, who could do that? I can do, I can do that. Who will do this? I'll do that. Amazing. I, I, just being on a committee with you is amazing, and I think I actually have learned a lot from you. I don't say I can do that all the time, but I try to do it as much as I can. But I have always appreciated the hard work that you've given, um, whenever you've been part of a committee. And I also see here, uh, I read that Valley of the Moon magazine, that it's been over $6.4 million donated, um, to all the different charities. So, you know, that's, that's admirable, admirable, and I'm just proud to know you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah, just, I'd like to say congratulations on 50 years. That's awesome. I remember it was Sears Point, and then Infineon. Sonoma Raceway seems the most appropriate. Uh, huge boon to a lot of businesses when we can bring in those, those larger events. I know working, when I worked on the Plaza Forum, formerly, it was a wonderful time for us, uh, when, when we had NASCAR or something like that in town. So it's a really good time, and I've worked at the track, and I've gotten to do hot laps during, uh, Hit the Road Jack and, uh, Hit the Road Jane, and that was just a, a really, really cool experience. So, um, yeah, I would like to know what a high-speed blood drive is, because it sounds, uh, rather dangerous, but, uh,
There will be another one coming up in September.
Other than that, yeah. Okay, cool.
Councilmember Henley?
Congratulations to the Sonoma Raceway, um, and just thank you for being such the community partner that you've been while I've, I've been here, and the, keeping the fascinating history alive of that venue, and you've, Steve Page, and your leadership, and your generosity to the community, and I'm excited to see, you know, what the next 50 years is going to be.
Councilmember Cook?
Well, not to date myself, but I guess I was three years old when the Raceway started, and Tom Ralph, former mayor, that you were sitting next to, you must have been, what, 18, 19 when it started? Yeah. Just getting the math right. I have to give a dig, at least, you. But, uh, thank you, Steve, um, and Sonoma Raceway, for all you've done for the city of Sonoma. We're blessed to have such a venue, um, right outside our doorstep. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, uh, thank you very much. I'm, I'm very honored, and I, I want to accept this on behalf of a wonderful team of people that go to work at Sonoma Raceway every day and work hard to, to make happen what happens out there, and mostly my job is to stay out of their way. So, um, on all of their behalf, um, we are very grateful for the honor. It's been a humbling experience for us to go through and, and go through the archives and, and see some of the things that happened at the track over the years so that we weren't even aware of early. And, you know, names like Dan Gurney and Mario Andretti, and some of the legends, and some of the amazing events that have taken place. Uh, it, it really has been fun to just educate ourselves about some of the history, and, um, but I think, in terms of the things we're proud of, when we, when our relationship with Infineon Technologies came to an end after 10 years, we went through a, a debate about what we should call ourselves, and I think that when we really came down to it, the, the name Sonoma and the, um, what the image of this town connotes, um, really worldwide in terms of, uh, of, of the, the beauty of this location and the warmth and the hospitality that the Sonoma experience connotes, it really aligned with what we wanted the racetrack's image to be. And so we're, um, we are very, very proud to, to hold that name and to, and to represent the community, and, and, um, thank you very much. And, and I also, in terms of warmth and hospitality, I also want to do a quick shout-out for the, the real celebrity in the room tonight, uh, Jeanne Powell, who you are honoring, uh, because when it comes to warmth and hospitality, there's no greater practitioner. But thank you very much for the honor.
It's a wonderful night in these chambers. And, and Steve, we would like to give you a plaque, and the Council would like to take a photo with you.
Okay.
One, two, three. Sonoma Raceway. Jeanne here. Okay, now on to item 3.2. Celebrate Sonoma, a presentation of a certificate of recognition to Jeanne Powell. And, um, I will start this item. So, celebrate Sonoma, we started this year to, more or less, once a month, um, recognize someone that we felt made up the fabric of our community, who is someone who really makes Sonoma the wonderful town that it is. And honestly, almost universally, everybody wanted to recognize Jean, and so... And it seemed like such, it is such an obvious choice, and so, and, and just by feeling, it's an obvious choice. And so I put some thought into why I personally feel that way. And I thought a lot about, um, what makes Jean so special. And I thought, you know, Jean really makes a home for people, and she makes people feel really welcome. And because she does that, that means that, uh, we have so, we share so many times with her. So when we're happy and we want to go out with our friends, we go to the Swiss, and Jean is there with us, and she's making us feel at home. After a funeral, we go to the Swiss, and we share that with Jean as well. When there's high school reunions, or people are on a first date, or sometimes they're breaking up, all kinds of things are happening at the Swiss, and Jean is there. And so there's all these life events that we're sharing with Jean, um, and she just makes everybody feel so welcome, and it's a tremendous thing to do. And all the comments on Facebook, which, you know, here's like one example. She is a true legend to all of us Sonomans, and so deserving of this award for epic work ethic, heart, loving, kind personality, and sass. She is one of Sonoma's finest and a dear friend, and I just think the, um, it's a wonderful opportunity for us as a City Council to be able to organize this today. And thank you so much for, um, creating such a wonderful space for people to come and be together, um, in all kinds of times during their life. And I just, I know that this is very, it can be very embarrassing, and you certainly have never sought any particular attention for the things that you do, but you make us all feel so wonderful, so I hope that, um, you remember this and know how, how well-loved you are, so. Oh, anybody who wants to come in can come on in, or we can also open the other door. Um, and now I will turn it over to my fellow council members who would like to make comments. Councilmember Henley?
Um, I think that you summed up, uh, so much of that so well. It's just amazing that, I feel like the, the wit, the breadth of life experiences that you have actually shared with me from the first date with my husband to urinals, and, like, it actually makes me emotional to think about it. But it's, uh, it's nice to live in a, a small town where I can always find a friendly face, uh, in you, uh, and that, uh, it's just, it, it's, it's inspiring that with the amount of people that you face all the time, and all kinds of people, and sometimes they're nice, sometimes they're not nice, but like, it's just, uh, you know, you have your, your standards as to how you, you know, do your job and live your life, and it's, uh, it's the patience of it all, I just find inspiring myself. So I am happy that we get to recognize you tonight.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah, I think, I think that in a lot of ways, this award was kind of built for somebody like Jean who really fits into the fabric, and you say Sonoma, and you think of her without even thinking of her. And it's just like, it's, it's a really wonderful thing. The Swiss is such a central part for all of my friends, for my class, and, and my time growing up here, and, and that's a place where I go and see all of them, and, and you're always there, and you're always kind and, and welcoming and wonderful, and you absolutely handle these Swiss nights when there's like 40,000 people on the patio, and everybody's trying to smoke a cigarette and walk off with a drink. You handle it like a general, and it is so wonderful to watch you just with your grace and your poise, and the way that you, you run the show there, and, um, everybody here appreciates you, and you're just an absolute wonderful asset to our community, and just thank you so much for everything you do.
Councilmember Cook?
I just want to say congratulations. I've been going to the Swiss a long time, and, uh, Hank's very blessed to have you, and I think you're a great advertisement, because I'll see you walking to work, and I'll think to myself, you know what? I should turn around and go have a drink at the Swiss. And sometimes I do, so thank you.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Well, I'm gonna have, when I die, I'm gonna have to go to confession before, because I have never met you, and, uh, I can't say that, you know, but I have to say it, I can't lie. But I've understood from my council members and other people here in the room, how, how you're just cherished by people in Sonoma, and I know this is probably, as I understand, your least favorite thing to do right now. So I would like to say I apologize for that, and now we're good friends, and I will be stopping by. I have a very, a good drink I like to drink, so, um, I'll have to get in there. Thank you so much. You know, Sonoma needs, that's, that's what makes Sonoma a wonderful place, you.
And, um, so now we have a few things to present to you. Jean, if you want to come forward. So first of all, from now and forever on, August the 5th is Jeanne Powell Day. Jean, there's your day. And I'd like to ask Rebecca Hermosillo from Congressman Mike Thompson's office to come up.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Rebecca, would you like a microphone?
Sure. Thank you. What an honor to have you. Yes, and to be recognized. I see you often at Swiss, and it's amazing how you can shimmy on through, through a packed house with such grace. So, thank you so much on behalf of Congressman Thompson, he wanted to recognize you.
Thank you all so much. This is amazing.
And last, and certainly not least, Councilmember Henley has a very special presentation.
Uh, so we knew that, uh, this particular occasion required something very special, and from the Council, I would like to present you with some golden flip flops. And I'm happy to see that, uh, you showed up wearing what I was hoping you would. It's hard. So it's been signed by the Council, and, uh, also to remind you of this day.
Thank you so much. Really, thank you all so much.
Jean, would you like to say a little, a few things? You can.
It's overwhelming, and I'm so flattered, and I, I'm happy to balance Sonoma as my town. And it's because of all of you people. It's just, thank you, my friends, my family.
We know where we live.
This is where the town is spelled out.
Everybody, all the way in. It's all around in one second.
Not gonna fit everybody up here.
So face this way. Come on, folks in the back, come on up. If you're, come on in. Come on in. That is, that's a good pick. All right, can you see me? If you can see me, I can see you. Ready? One, say Jeanne on three. One, two, three.
Jeanne!
All right, one more time, say Jeanne. One, two, three.
Jeanne!
Excellent.
How are you, buddy? Good to see you guys. How nice of you to come.
Thank you for letting us do this, Jeanne.
Hey Catherine, good to see you.
We're gonna take a five-minute break, and I think everyone here is headed to the Swiss, Uh, councilmember Agramonte. Oh, that's a great one.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I want that picture.
Councilmember Agramonte. Now on, that was one of the most wonderful moments I've had in these chambers. And now on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Hunley?
I don't need to pull this, but I did want to suggest that item 4.2, that we add all of the members of our Sonoma County Legislative Delegation, so we'd include Senator Mike McGuire, Assemblymembers Wood and Agar Curry.
I think that's fine. Are there any other council comments? Oh, questions, sorry.
Yeah, because we have a crowd out here for 6-3. Could we move that in front of 6-1?
I'm fine with that. Do we need a motion for changing the order of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
So for those of you here on the Ting matter, we'll hear that before the housing report. And with that, I will take it out to the public. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on the consent calendar? Consent calendar only. No. That's okay. Seeing no one come to the podium, I will close public comment on the consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Abstain.
Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries 4001.
And now on to item 5.1, continued public hearing from June 24th, 2019, on the adoption of a resolution granting the appeal of the Viviani Trust of Planning Commission Resolution Number 032019, in which the commission found that the 2004 use permit for the Sonoma Cheese Factory Development Project located at 2 West Spain Street has expired and had not vested. I will turn it over to the city manager to discuss the continuance of this matter.
Yes, Mayor Harrington, members of the council. So, again, council had a public hearing on this on June 24th, and we received direction. And that direction was to deny the appeal and approve and hold that the prior 2004 permit was still headstanding. So this is a clarification issue. We didn't kind of formally close the public hearing. We'll be coming back on August 19th with the actual resolution for council to take final action. So this is a kind of a, to make sure that we're clear legally, we ask you to continue this public hearing to the August 19th, where we will plan on opening and then closing the public hearing and having council take action on the resolution.
Thank you. Are there any council questions? Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And now we will address item 6.3, the change in the agenda. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a request to schedule a council discussion by Councilmember David Cook regarding allowing the Ting Memorial to install recognition bricks to support fundraising efforts. And I will turn this item over, but before I do, I just, for members of the public, I want to clarify what this means. The city council has a two-step process for putting items on the agenda. The first step is tonight, the council can consider a request by a city council member to put it on a future agenda. So the merits of the discussion will not be considered tonight. The question is, should this topic be discussed and fully noticed at a later date? That's what's on for tonight, and I will turn it on to staff.
Great, thank you, Mayor Harrington. That is correct. That is the purpose of tonight's action. And the way the council process works is a council member can ask something to be agendized, you then bring it to your colleagues, as Councilmember Cook has done on this topic, and asking for support to agendize it for a future meeting. So just a little bit of background on the Ting. For a number of years, Sonoma Pengli Sister City Committee of the Sonoma Sister Cities Association has been working to raise money to build a memorial to recognize the contribution of Chinese laborers from the late 1800s, who contributed significantly to the fabric of Sonoma and the Sonoma's wine industry. So this request first came to council on September 3rd, 2014, and there was support to do that. And then in March 2016, the council gave conceptual approval to put the Ting in Depot Park. It then came back later that year in September of 2016, where the council actually approved plans, and the location gave the city manager the authority to execute a long-term maintenance agreement, and required that the Sister City Committee basically meet all of the insurance and permitting requirements of the city. So one of the things that, as we've worked through this, the Sister City Committee has been raising money to build the Ting, and they have sold recognition bricks as a way to do that. And so they, they've had conversations with staff about wanting to have, add those to the plans. Since that was not part of the original plans and approved by the council, it's not something that council, that staff can do. So with this, I'll turn it to Councilmember Cook for him to elaborate further, but that's a bit of background for everyone.
Well, I'll keep this very short. I would like to definitely see this go on to the agenda, future agenda. The Ting means a lot to the city of Sonoma, and I think that having bricks within, hopefully within side the Ting is something I'd love to see discussed. And this would be a way that we could show our sister cities who work so hard, and what the Chinese labor building the, the whole wine industry that, you know, was supporting the city of Sonoma. So I'd like, I'd like to see this, I'm just looking for, I will give a motion that this would go on to a public comment. Oh, yeah, that's right. That's it.
Are there any council questions? All right, I will open it up to the public. Anyone who would like to, please step forward, say your name and your address, and you have three minutes to address this on the topic of whether it should be agendized.
Thank you. I realize it's a two-step process. I'm David Katz, I live at 1130 Brockman Lane. K-A-T-Z is the spelling of my name. I brought a rendering of what the Ting is gonna look like, and I thought everyone should have a look at it. This has been a labor of love for almost five years now.
You could pass it, and we can.
Oh, sure. The, I'm a member of the Pengli Committee, and we've started this project in September 2014, and we've gotten it to the point where all the plans are before the building department, and we need to go forward if we're gonna develop the Ting. One thing that's standing in our way now, and we don't understand why it should be, because the bricks have always been part of this project. In March of 2017, the building department inquired in writing from us, asking where are the donor bricks? Again, in September 2017, they again said they need details on the donor bricks. And it's just recently, in March of this year, that we were told that the donor bricks are a political issue, and we may not be allowed to have donor bricks. So we need something that says we can go forward with the project. The impediment to our project is, since we've taken this money based upon the donor recognition by bricks, if we don't get the approval, we're gonna have to go back to the donors and ask permission, or give them a refund of the money. And we also need to have further contributions to the project. We're not sure at this point, because we don't have a set of plans as to what the ultimate cost is gonna be, and we also need to raise money for maintenance of the, of the Ting. So it's really imperative that we have city council approval to have the bricks as part of our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that'd like to address this issue?
Hi, David Aicher, E-I-C-H-A-R. And I know, since this is a request to put on a future agenda, you're not gonna be discussing the merits of the case. And I think in general, if any one of the city council members wants to put something on the agenda, you should all support it. If it is something that is within the jurisdiction, within the purview of the city council, I think almost everything should be heard if there's an individual council member that wants to put something on the agenda, that it's worthwhile to put it on the future agenda so that you can discuss the merits of it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Fred Albach, 195508 Street East. I would like to stand in support of putting this item on a future agenda, and as everybody knows, you're not supposed to talk about the merits, but people do anyway. So I would say that, just in light of putting it on the agenda and what you might talk about, if you look about, any plaque around town has got the names of everybody who was involved in it. So it's a really common thing. So if you take all these plaques with the former mayors and council members of the library in front of City Hall, the Overlook Trail, everywhere you go, Vallejo statue, there's the people's names who, who were involved in raising the money. So that's a plaque. So the bricks are basically the same thing in a different location. And I think it's really important that the council help out this monument to recognize the Chinese history in this area, especially in light of the Chinese Exclusion Act and the really poor treatment of the Chinese got. It would be great if the council could give them some good treatment here with the bricks. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public?
Hi, Teresa Barnes, T-E-R-E-S-A-B-A-R-N-E-S. It's just a little bit of a catch-22. We can't go forward if we don't have the council approving this, apparently, and so we need to have you consider it so that we can try to move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Howard Eisenstark, E-I-S-E-N-S-T-A-R-K. I live on Sunset Way in Sonoma. And I've been on the Pengli Committee for several years and been working with everybody trying to get this done. The merits of the case of having a Ting have been talked about, I'm not gonna repeat that. I think the issue is how a decision is made in the city about something like this. And from what I've seen, it seems like the council is the place to make that decision. Council has approved this project step by step, and we think that this is where it should be discussed and decision made about the bricks. We've been told it's a political issue, it has to do with having people's names everywhere, but again, as has been said, this is a common practice. It encourages people to donate money. The city is not giving us money to do this. We need to get money from people who support the project and might want to have recognition of that, too. So we're hoping that the city council will put this on the agenda, and we have a full discussion of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna close public comment on this and bring it back to the council for discussion. I might start, so I support having a future agenda item about this topic, not only about the Ting. I think that the fundamental question, so I'd like to talk about the Ting, but also a broader topic, which is public space having in. a broader topic, which is public space having in private individuals' name on it. That is something that absolutely probably should be pre-approved by the city council. There's some thought here that maybe that happened. I'd like to know about that as part of the staff report. Did the staff know about it, and did they approve it? If that's true, that's very relevant. But I think we have to be very careful about what people's names are, and I don't ever want to, you know, later walk down the bike path and have it filled with the names of people who wanted to, you know, every step I take is owned by somebody else who got to write their name on our sidewalks. That's sort of the worst-case scenario, is that we sell off all public lands to anyone who wants to put their name on it. That's kind of the exaggerated outcome if we don't have any policies about where people's names can go. That being said, I also appreciate the sister cities organization. I think our relationship with Peng Li is probably our strongest sister cities. Chinese New Year event is a beautiful event, and our connection with the consulate is also very strong. So I do want to support the Ting, but I also have policy concerns, not because it's political. I don't think that's a good word for it. I think the real question is, under what conditions can public spaces, which all taxpayers have contributed to create, be allowed to have private names on them? And that's a fundamental question that is a policy. It's not a political question. It's a policy question about where do we want private individuals' names, and do we want to sell off public spaces to private individuals that taxpayers have paid for? So I'm happy to discuss that topic in the near future. Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah, I also support this being on the agenda. I think it's important that we do discuss it. I totally respect Councilmember Cook and want to see this item brought to him if it's important. I respect the members of the Peng Li Association who brought this forward, Sister Cities Association. I think it's important, as Mayor Harrington stated, that we do discuss broadly what is our policy going forward with names, donor names, being on public spaces. I think it is something that, while it's been done before, is maybe not the best policy, and I think we should ask that question. And also, you know, we've had some discussions of whether these bricks will be inside or out, and then we've also heard that there's going to be, you know, more fundraising. So how is that fundraising going to be going apart? So those are kind of questions that I would have going forward with this one, and those are questions that I'd like to be up for discussion as we go through this item as well.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, I agree with everyone who's spoken earlier, and I agree with our mayor. We need to find out when this information maybe possibly was brought forward, at least with the understanding of the committee. I think it's beautiful, you know? I really support it as other people do here, and it doesn't, it's not going to harm us in any way to take a look at the policy. So I think that that's a good decision. But, you know, it would be great if we could probably try to schedule this very soon, after this council meeting, to help the organization out, because obviously fundraising is tough. And it would be nice to be able to give you a heads, a foot up on that by our taking a look at this and deciding in the very near future.
I have a motion that this comes back to the city council in a future agenda, and the request by Councilmember Aggermonte, which is a hard one to say today for some reason, I would like to have that process be quickly.
Second?
Well, I'd just like to ask the city manager, so there's additional items which have been asked for in connection with this matter. Does that need to be part of the motion? Maybe the city attorney does.
So I guess the maker of the motion is this, there was a request to talk about kind of two issues. One, specific situation of the Ting, which was your original request from Councilmember Cook. And then, and the broader policy. Okay. So if you will, and was there a second on the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so Councilmember Aggermonte, do you support that it's the broader piece?
I do.
Okay. Then if council wants to vote, then we would look at bringing both those pieces back. Just, I think in terms of for staff, I think we can bring this back fairly quickly. If council wants to then develop an actual policy on what that would look like, that would take one, probably that would come back at a future step. But, thank you.
Great. Can we get a roll call? Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
So, Madam Mayor, I could, I'd like to hear what the city manager, if she would say that again, because does that mean there's going to be, even if it comes back to the city council, to develop a policy will take much longer, and they will not be able to move forward?
No, my apologies, I wasn't clear. There's the two conversations council wants to have. One is the question of recognition bricks in the Ting. The other is a broader policy question about recognition of individual names on public property and that broader policy. So if we get policy direction on both those, the actual drafting of a policy and the broader would need to come back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming and for your work. Now, on to item six, oh, okay, you have your thing. On to item 6.1, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Direction on Housing Our Community 2019 Town Hall Series. This is a report, and I will turn it over to the city manager.
Great. Councilmember Harrington, members of the council, members of public, we're pleased to have, be here with you to talk about our three town hall series. I'm going to turn it to Jim Hyde with Urban Green, who's been our consultant on this. And so with Jim, why don't you go ahead?
There we go. Am I on? Okay, great. And there's the screen. Okay. First of all, council members, Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you. And I want to take a minute and just applaud you for undertaking this process. I know housing's at the top of a lot of discussion in the region, and I think we know that the conventional same-old, same-old is not going to solve the problems we have. So this process that was put forward, and we've worked with staff on, I think has been really an exceptional effort and a really good thing to do for communities such as Sonoma. The other thing is, I do want to commend the staff, because it's really been great. I work with a lot of communities, and it's really been an exceptional group to work with. They've been really dedicated, follow through quickly, very responsive and creative and open to new ideas. So it's really been a pleasure. So thank you to staff for that. The other thing is, I think it's a great example of collaboration. We had a lot of great work with the county, other NGOs, like Sustainable Sonoma and the Chamber of Commerce. So this was not just a kind of focused staff and consultant effort. We really did try to get a broader community. So there's a lot of good things that came out of this. This project was initiated with a couple of key objectives. We weren't sure what we were going to get out of it, but it was, we identified some things early on. And the first and foremost was just to create a community engagement process that was creative and really brought people into a conversation about housing, and through that process, helped them get a better understanding of some of the key terms and tools, which admittedly are increasingly confusing. At the same time, they were trying to find simple solutions. We're making it a lot harder for the average person to understand. So part of this was education, and the other part was communication or conversation. And then we were hoping out of that, that we would actually get some here from those that participated, some of their priorities for what they would like to see done as far as solutions. And then, you know, one of the things that I observed throughout the state and a lot of the work that I do is, there's just so much time spent on study after study after study, and there's really almost this paralysis. So this idea of, let's be willing to experiment, let's try some new things, and let's focus on some actions. They may not solve everything, but at least let's try to get some things done. So that was one of the things that we were trying to, and it really pleased at the last session, some of the creative things that people came up with. So what did we do? We had three town halls, and we used the term "town hall" because that's a term of art here locally that I think people are very comfortable with, and we themed those where each of them had a little different focus, and I think we're quite clear what we were trying to do. So the first was called "Learn," the second was "Discuss," and the last one's "Explore." I'll explain what those really meant. But we started the first one, which was "Learn," which was to kind of create this common baseline for everybody that was there about some of the key terms. So as we moved through the process, everybody was using the same language. And we did an online survey that we sent out to the community. We had about 120 people participate, which I think is a pretty good showing. And we asked them about what we called "Your Housing IQ." And we said, "What are some of the terms that you fully understand? What are terms that you don't, aren't real comfortable with, and what are terms that you haven't even heard of?" And this was really helpful, because I think things, the terms that we in the industry think everybody knows and understands, really were not, you know, you look at the one that's on the top, "Density Bonus." Most of the people there didn't have a clue what a density bonus was, or discretionary approvals, deed-restricted housing. So we used this feedback as a way to structure our first presentation, and we did a number of slides that, again, set the baseline, so as we went to our last one, that people were understanding common terms. In the work that I've been doing around the state and country on this, I find just getting a common language that the community is comfortable with is really the key foundation to having a meaningful, productive conversation about housing. It doesn't necessarily have to be the same everywhere, but you need to understand, and this is a great example. We talk a lot about affordable housing versus affordable housing, and it's capital A, capital H, versus little a, versus a, little h. And the difference is that which is deed-restricted and protected for a long time versus that which is supplied by the market and just happens to be below market. And everybody in the public generally just throws affordable housing into one category, but there's some very key distinctions between those two. So this was a little bit of, once we got from the first session to the last one, people were really understanding that. The role of deed restrictions to make it, capital A, capital H, housing versus little a, little h. And then the role of inclusionary housing as a way for communities to actually continue to expand their stock of capital A, capital H, affordable housing. The other thing that we spent quite a bit of time on was explaining that not all affordable housing is the same, that there really is, you know, a very complicated structure based on the way HUD structures and the state structures it, and it's tied to area median income, and that's tied to the number of people in the household, and what does that translate into in terms of rent and purchase price? We've tried to at least lay the groundwork there so people understood that. And then also, what does that mean relative to Sonoma? Because those metrics are established by the county, but you live within Sonoma, which has, you know, some different, some very different economics, and so how does all of that play out? So the first town hall was what we called "Learn." It was this housing primer, a lot about the tools. This was actually a really, really delightful, same shirt, isn't it? This was a really, you know, this was two hours of a lot of slides like you just saw, but I actually thought it went and was a really pleasant presentation to do, because people, it was a big crowd. We had 57 people, but people were very comfortable to ask questions as we went. So instead of, you know, 90 minutes of brain dump and then 30 minutes of question and answer, there was a dialogue that got created that I thought was actually very productive and actually felt very comfortable for the people that were in attendance. The second one then, so we took that, which laid the groundwork, and then we went to what we called "Discuss," which was this moderated panel. One of the things that we wanted to do was bring in people who are in the industry to share their experiences, lessons learned, the challenges they're facing. And we wanted to balance the public affordable housing side with the private sector development finance-driven side. So we had Larry Florin from Burbank Housing, which is, you know, one of the great nonprofits that's doing a lot of housing in the area. Steve Ledson, local developer here, who's done a lot of great infill, private housing. Benjamin Wickham, who's with the Sonoma County, came from Portland, which has really been a pioneer in a lot of very interesting programs, and he had some great examples of work they're doing around the county on affordability. And then Jeff Zimmerman, who's an architect, talking about the design and what we call affordable by design aspects. So we had a good attendance for that. Again, it was two hours. We did a panel discussion, which I moderated, and then we took question cards from the community, the attendees, which gave us a great chance for people to ask questions, but not have somebody, you know, kind of command the mic and get the same question three times. We tried to take advantage of the talent we had at the panel as best we could then. Then the last one was where it all came together, and this was the capstone. So this was an interactive workshop. We took, we had 57 attendees. We broke them into tables of about eight people each, so we had about 12 tables. And it was really kind of a fun thing. We did a quick introduction, 30-minute recap some of the terms, because some people weren't there. And then we did a whole exercise where I'll walk you through some of the questions we asked, but we've been using this technique a lot, where people get Legos. The Legos relate to housing types. They put it on a map. And the kind of tangible, hands-on quality of this is both really meaningful and exciting for people. It's also incredibly frustrating. It was really fascinating to hear some of the conversations that people were having about, they wanted a lot of housing, but they couldn't figure out how to fit it all in, because it was all single-family homes. And so there were a lot of these things where the things, as they were starting to wrestle with stuff that you, as the leadership of the community and staff are dealing with from a planning standpoint, you know, deal with every day, I think the community is starting to understand it's not as easy as maybe some people think it should be. A quick word about how we got out to the community, because I think based on feedback from staff, this is some of the best-attended programs that you've had to date. And again, kudos to, especially Sarah Tracy, because she did a great job of multiple channels of getting the word out. So we did emailers, there were postcards, a lot of work on social media, posted on the website, good word of mouth. We're getting a lot of people just hearing about it from others. The online survey tool, which we did before each session, helped give us more information about how we wanted to tailor the information at each session, and then the collaboration with other organizations, as I've said, and there was, press releases went out to local papers. So here's what we got, kind of attendance. I think, and this is a bit anecdotal, we haven't checked the data, but just every time that we would have a show of hands or looking at the surveys, I think we had about 40% of the people came to every one of them, which I think was good, that people actually came back. Majority of the people stayed the entire time, which two hours each time and three hours for the last one, I think was pretty impressive, because it's claiming a lot of people's evening time. But I think people genuinely felt that it was valuable use of their time. They learned a lot. So the last session, as I mentioned, was very hands-on, interactive, and it was really about creating a housing vision. And a quick caveat, what I'm going to share with you are the results. It was only for those that attended, so it's not a statistically accurate sample of the community. But on the other hand, it's the people that took the time to show up and spend their evening there, and they care about housing, they know about housing, so I think it should be given fair weight. And we basically, in the course of the two and a half hours that we had for people to work and then report out, we asked them three basic things. How much housing is appropriate over the next decade? How much of that housing should be deed-restricted, affordable? So the capital A, capital H. What kind of housing should it be in terms of product? Where could it or should it go within the community's geography, within the city's limits? And then, after they'd been through all of that exercise, what kind of aha moments did they have during the conversations about, what are the opportunities that maybe we're not looking hard enough at? And what are some of the barriers that seem to come up every time they would come up with a solution that, you know, needs some leadership to make some difference on? So the first one is, you know, how much housing is appropriate? What you see here is the trend line of housing units per year, 2004 to 2018, so 28 units per year. That orange line that you see across there is your current GMO at 65 units. That actually, I think, stepped down somewhere along the line there, but you're at 65 units. So you can see you're well below what your, in some ways, could argue is your capacity or your allowed capacity of growth. And this was pretty fascinating. Every table, while there was a range of numbers that were provided, every table was comfortable with seeing more growth and more housing over the next decade than you've been producing historically. The response was averaged out at 735 units over 10 years, and I'll show what that means. But that's about a 315% increase over the current trend. So if you remember this last slide, you're 28 units per year. If you're 735 divided by 10 years, that's 73.5 units. So this is what that chart would look like. And I took this just from the recession, because it was, you know, pre-2009, 2008, we were in a very different world, but this is post-recession, what was, what's done, and then going forward. So you can see, it's a pretty significant number. The blue line, again, is your allowed GMO, and then the orange line is what we call a trimmed mean. So I took out the high number and the low number, because they have a tendency to skew, and then you can see that drops it down. But it definitely, on a generalized basis, those in attendance were saying they were comfortable with seeing more housing production than what has been happening for the last 20 years. The second question, so after they'd kind of set that overall number, we asked them to say, "Okay, how much of that new housing do you think should be affordable?" And as benchmarks, we said, you know, the city's inclusionary housing ordinance is 20%. Your peer communities in the region run 5% to 12% as a percentage of their total, and you have about 250 affordable housing units. So again, this was a very high aspiration and a very strong kind of feeling, but there was a desire to see a lot of that housing that people were willing to embrace coming into the community. They wanted to see a lot more of that be affordable, and the mean on that was like almost 50%. It's a low of 25, up to 100. And then we asked them a very simple thing. So take your numbers and multiply it by 450,000 per unit, which is kind of a proxy number that we've gotten from Burbank and other affordable housing providers, what it costs to deliver one affordable housing unit. And so you can see, these numbers are ranging from 330 million to 33 million in terms of a 10-year cost for affordable housing. And as a reference point, I asked when we met with the ad hoc committee and city manager, you know, "What is your annual operating budget?" So it's $20 million. So very big, you know, kind of by comparison, very big leap there in terms of funding commitments. And then the other thing that came up a lot in the conversation, and we are seeing this around the region, in addition to new construction, there was a lot of desire to see around the region, in addition to new construction, there was a lot of desire to see preservation of the little a, little h housing, of market-driven affordable housing, and converting that to permanent. And as Benjamin Wickham shared, there's a number of places that are actually buying apartment complexes and renovating them and putting deed restrictions on them, and that's a much, so if it's 450 for new, that is about 300 per door. So, there's a pretty big difference in what it costs to buy existing housing and renovate it and protect it versus building all new. The other thing is, you have of your affordable housing stock of 250 units, you have a number of those that are coming up to a sunset period where those deed restrictions will come off. So, that's a, that's a low-hanging fruit in a lot of ways, kind of locking that in for another 20, 30, 40 years in terms of protecting the stock that you have, and that was something that came up a lot in the community conversations. Then the third question we asked people for is, what kind of housing do you want? And we had shared with them before a number of images and product types, everything from townhomes to cottage courts to mixed use to apartments, and then part of the Lego exercise was each Lego represented a certain number. And what we were hearing is that people really wanted to see more diversity in the housing that was being delivered. If I remember correctly, Sonoma is about 75% single-family detached, 25% multifamily, which is a fairly common in the region. You know, some of the best post-war cities are about 60/40 mix in terms of kind of providing a range, so you're a little high on the single family. But certainly, generationally, demographically, people are moving and desiring towards more attached and multifamily housing. So, people were asking for that. As a result of that, many of the tables either eliminated the single family, the yellow Legos completely from their presentation, or greatly reduced the number, and somewhere around more like 25% single family and 75% other products. And then some of the highly desired products were the cottage court, because it's kind of the best of both worlds. It gives you density, but gives you a scale and character that's very similar to the fabric of Sonoma. Mixed use as you get into some of the denser areas, apartments and townhomes. And then we asked, where could new housing go? So, again, the exercise was, take this map, it's color-coded, we took off all the zoning except so they could see the Broadway corridor and some of the public lands, which were the blue, and then they placed the Legos. It wasn't to scale, but at least acted as a generalized, what are the areas that were acceptable for more density? And clearly, there were a number of areas that came up time and time again where people were looking for more, what we call more intensity and more density in select areas as a way to meet these higher housing goals. And those areas were Western Apple Street and the Broadway Gateway. Interestingly, the historic Broadway corridor did not receive a lot of requests for increase in density and intensity. So, there were some areas where people felt, you know, were acceptable and probably appropriate for improvements. And then the last one was this question about opportunities and barriers, and this was really great. So, after everybody had presented out all of their tactical exercises, we asked them to just summarize some of their top three takeaways. And the thing that came up time and time again was that the process by which housing gets approved and defined is really one of the greatest barriers. And there was a lot of request, and we're seeing this more and more in other places, where cities are taking a much more proactive approach to defining what is an appropriate kind of housing, where should it go, getting it pre-approved, even to the point of taking it through the SEQA process, so that developers can come in, they know what's going to be approved, they know what the community is going to support, and then all of those costs can be clawed back through the, from the city along the way. But there's, the city is doing what, they're providing the certainty that the developers want, and then the developers can come in and execute quickly, which, you know, in markets as volatile as ours, it's very important to be on time with the market. The other thing that came up a lot was leveraging the underutilized lands, areas that are either not, that could be upzoned in some of those corridors that we talked about that have the capacity for a lot more housing, and even looking harder at city-owned lands and school-owned lands, school district-owned lands for affordable housing. So, if you built workforce housing on the school sites and it was for teachers as a preference, that seems like that's kind of a win-win. You've got land that's sitting there fallow, it's going to generate revenue, it's also going to support the teachers, things like that. And then the last one was this question about, okay, how do we solve that $330 million number? There were things that were brought up about increasing the TOT, putting a surcharge on second homes, looking at the community land trust model, and contributions from local employers that would ideally benefit from having their employers live closer to where they work. So, that kind of wraps up the report and what came out of that. I'm going to turn it over to the city manager to talk a little bit about what could happen from here.
Thank you, Jim. So, in terms of some of the things that are coming next, some of these, council, we talked about it, our general plan, urban growth boundary conversation just a week ago, when we talked about development code and housing element, general plan UGB. But one of the opportunities is really looking at the state's SB2 funding, which is about $160,000 of grant funding, and how do we want to use that funding to help us streamline housing? And David Storer is already working on that. You know, there are some, kind of creating that housing vision, and how does that get woven into this? And exploring the timing of a housing action plan with some of these other elements is something we're looking at. You know, one of the data points that we're going to need is really to study the opportunity sites and underutilized land, you know, what, how much capacity can we, do we currently have within our current boundaries? This is one of the first things you would do when you'd start in your housing element. It's one of the first things, probably if we look at a housing action plan, some of that data analysis, some things that we don't have is going to be important. We might want to consider a housing-specific plan, we talked a little bit about that at our last meeting as well. And then I think as Jim said, you know, there's things we're going to have to try, we're going to have to beta test and just see if there's some low-hanging fruit or some pilot projects, and clearly, there's some code items need to be updated and cleaned up in our development code. And then really looking at those deed restricted affordable housing, what can we do? So, those are some of the next steps or next opportunities maybe to think about. The next item is really, I just want to do some brief thank yous. I want to thank Vice Mayor Harvey and Councilmember Hunley for really spending a lot of time as a subcommittee on this. They worked really closely with staff and the consultants, so very appreciative of their time. And council, I want to tell you, I really think they represented you well, as they helped us shape this, knowing, knowing the community. I want to thank Rachel also for designing our logo. Staff, again, it was a team effort, myself and David Storer, kind of as project managers going back and forth, and then Sarah's communications, Wendy and Christina helping on the planning side, and then Rebecca helping a lot with kind of the noticing and publishing and all of that as well. And honestly, I want to thank Jim Hyde. You know, Jim, I think his background was perfect to really help us through this, he was creative, he's current, he's collaborative, and I think we really got some great products. I also want to thank our panelists who spent time, so the panelists with Larry Florin, Steve Ledson, Benjamin Wickham and Jeff Zimmerman were a really good blend. And then we had great facilitators, our planning commission members and community members. We had two members of Sonoma County Planning Staff who came and helped as well. So, we couldn't have done it without all of those great facilitators. So, and then we also, as always, have great community partners. So, Vintage House was great in terms of location to hold the event and really worked with us well. Whole Foods provided the food in partnership with Sonoma Valley Chamber of Commerce. Chamber also organized babysitting. I'm not sure we had many folk, anyone or many take us up on it, but it was a trial, it was a beta, we tried it and we put it out there. And Sonoma, you know, Bob's team with Sonoma Community Television, they have done an amazing job recording all of these and being our technical experts. That's one of the things, sustainable Sonoma, we did some cross-fertilization with some of their events and tried to support each other and appreciate their help doing some outreach. So, council, with that, that is kind of the report out, and so happy to take any questions or hear any comments.
Are there any council member comment, questions before public comment? None? I will open this matter up to the public who would like to comment on it. Welcome, public.
Hi, I'm Fred Alabak. I'm a member of the Sonoma Valley Housing Group, and I'm not speaking for them this evening, but I am a member and I attended all three meetings, and I was really excited about this process. And I think some good stuff has come out of it, and I don't know what to say at this point. You know, I think that it's important to follow up on, on the momentum that started. And so, we got some good momentum now. I think it'd be really good to jump on it and, and get a few things done, get the low-hanging fruit if there's, if there's some development code that can be gone through. I had thought that, that a fine-tooth comb with that would be great to, for example, one thing is the, the city's inclusionary ordinance is, is only 120% AMI. So, at the Mockingbird Project, they had four units, they're all 120% AMI. The people who need the housing that we just went through the $15 an hour thing with, they can't afford 120% AMI. So, the people that who are serving this community need, you know, housing at a lower rate. So, that's an issue that, that comes up in a lot of projects where developers will say, oh, this is attainable housing, it's family housing, it's affordable housing, but when you look at it, it's just the inclusion that they're talking about. They're not talking about that they're doing anything extra. And the inclusion in the city is 120% AMI, and I think that's why Steve Ledson said he doesn't mind it, because it is 120% AMI. Because like Jim mentioned, there's a sweet spot for the inclusionary ordinance, and I think maybe less starts to scare these guys off. But if we don't do that, then we're not serving the people who are serving us. And so, it's really important to have an honest and transparent spread of what the inclusionary ordinance is. So, I would say that it's not necessarily low-hanging fruit, but if you take your inclusionary ordinance, make it so that every time you have one 120% AMI, then you've got to have 80, you've got to have 180, 60, et cetera. So, you have one of each as you go through, and that would make sense and that would be fair. So, I have a lot of thoughts on this, and I know that this is just starting, but, you know, and I was at the hospital the other day, I just happened to be there, and so I'm walking through the halls of the hospital, and there's all these guys who have given money for this room or that. And the hospital's really great, but why don't these same guys give money so you get, get $20 million to buy, and then you would pay for 50 affordable housing units? So, these same guys who are concerned about the community could do that. So, I think that's, you know, that's doable.
Or gals.
Yeah, right. Their, their pictures are all on there. And so, I was looking at the pictures going, you know what, don't stop there, keep going. So, I'd like to, you know, thank everybody for, for this process, and also in terms of the trimming, trimming of the mean, since I've showed up at all these, I think my opinion should be weighted more heavily.
I'm sure that it is. Thank you, Fred.
Councilmember Barnett, I first want to thank the council for getting going on this housing plan. I think it was a great idea, and I want to thank Jim and staff for putting these meetings together. I learned a lot, and I think it sort of reinforced what I already knew, that despite the sort of prevailing narrative out there, I think Sonoma is actually doing a very good job on housing. And I think you should, we should all recognize that. I think, from what I understand, we're meeting arena numbers. Obviously, we haven't been meeting our growth management ordinance every year, but we forget that there was a sort of once-in-a-century housing recession that happened right in the middle of that, and so that's probably a bit distorted. I think the, in terms of streamlining housing, I don't think the issue has ever been that. I mean, perhaps you want to hire more staff to streamline the process, but historically, Sonoma, at least from what I remember, has approved every housing project. I mean, Spain Street is full of new housing, there are housing projects throughout Sonoma that have been approved, and the only controversial projects have been projects that have either proposed non-housing on housing opportunity sites or sites that those in the community thought could produce more housing. And so, I think we need to recognize Sonoma is doing a very good job on housing, and I think as we move forward, we need to build on the foundation we've already created here and use the expertise of our new planning director and take some of these ideas and go forward into the next 10 years with some more innovative ideas in terms of underutilized properties, et cetera. In terms of the inclusionary ordinance, you know, obviously, the people that, the, attended the seminar or the housing town hall, you know, supported 50% affordable housing. If you want to guarantee no more housing will be built in Sonoma, you should pass that. So, we have to be thoughtful about that. Nothing will be built if you do 50%, 20% actually is on the high end. So, I would just suggest, suggest that. And in turn, and again, this is probably unpopular to say during a housing action plan public comment, but moving forward, when we look at underutilized sites and possibilities to put housing in town, I think it's important that the council realize that not everything we do from here on out can be housing, because moving forward, whether it's retail or hotel rooms or other types of land uses, that actually provides a flow of revenue to the city, where housing, you know, obviously provides the permit fees and everything once it's built, and obviously provides other benefits. But obviously, the city is a municipal corporation, it needs to have, you know, cash flow and revenue over the years. And so, we need to look at where we're going to put more housing, but we also need to look where we're going to put other forms of revenue for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to start? Councilmember Hunley?
All right, we'll make this relatively quick. I'm just wanting to say thank you again to Jim and the staff for putting this together. This has been a topic that I've been wanting to get further into for a long time now, and it's kind of hard picking a direction to start, and we've picked one, and I feel pretty good about that. And I think that, you know, even in our last subcommittee meeting, there's just, there's a lot to talk about, and with the urban growth boundary discussion and the general plan, it's kind of an interesting time where it's like, some things need to be thought about faster than others, but it's, I think that we have a lot of practical things to move forward on. And, you know, I think one of the underlying themes was just, you just kind of, kind of pick a direction and start moving and try stuff. And so, I think that there's not going to be one thing that we could possibly ever do to fix the whole problem, but I think that there's some definite solutions, and so the, I hope is not lost on this topic, and I look forward to working on it further. And thank you to my subcommittee partner, Logan.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah, I want to thank Rachel for, for putting so much time and effort into this and for designing our logo, and the council for, for trusting Rachel and I to kind of lead this process. It was a lot of fun. Staff put in a ton of time, had a lot of meetings with Kathy and David and learned a lot from both of them. I think David's expertise has become a major, major asset to the city, and I really appreciate all the hard work that he put in. And of course, Jim, coming from Healdsburg, all the knowledge that you brought from there were a huge benefit. I thought that the, the meetings were, I thought the town halls were great. I really thought that they were wonderful, I thought that they provided a really good education base in a, in a way that was digestible and understandable for people. I felt like we built on it, built on it in an appropriate way, and I felt like we didn't, we kind of ignored the things that we didn't want to talk about. We came in with clear goals, and I felt like we achieved some information that we can use going forward as we develop our development code. And I think that your, your planning and your, your kind of knowledge base here really helped us along in that process. And I also really want to thank the, the speakers that came out to our second meeting, that was really cool. They did a wonderful job, and also Sarah Tracy did a, did an incredible job getting the word out there, too. I'll take some credit, though, because I ran out and handed flyers all over town. But yeah, I'm really excited to see where, where we go with this next. I think we have a lot of conversations to have about specific housing development code policy and how to change this. I think we've gotten some clear direction from the public on where some density may want to be going and these kinds of things, and I think that we have a lot to build on here. So, I think we're putting a good foundation for the house, and we're going to grow from there, and I look forward to it.
Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I just want to thank my colleagues for having this housing and, and staff and everything, a lot of hard work. You know, it's very interesting, I think it's great, it's great talking points, and hopefully, we can move forward and look at it. Probably the biggest thing that I got out of it is talking to public, you know, the city of Sonoma being so small, and a lot of the numbers that we were talking about were just associated with the city of Sonoma, knowing that we are surrounded, you know, by the springs and the incorporated area. And I'm hoping that, I know that our planning director is, is reaching out to the county and, you know, just discussing some of the items and looking at infrastructure and, and different things. But, you know, we are the city of Sonoma, so we have our own numbers. It's hard for us to take other numbers and try to integrate those in. But I think as we go forward, I do believe, like one of the speakers, Councilmember Barnett, was just talking about, you know, it's very important, you know, to have that balance in our community of, of different, you know, housing and, and hotels or things that were the money, you know, the money can be sustained to help pay for these projects also. So, my hat goes off to Councilmember Hunley and Vice Mayor Harvey and the rest of the councilmembers for attending and, and looking at this, and staff, so thank you. It's, and hopefully, we move forward and we start getting some money in this fund so we can do something.
Exactly. Exactly. Councilmember Agarante?
Yeah, it's interesting. I, I like the idea of the cottage courts. And we do have something like that on the east side, but I, I went on a garden tour once and I don't remember where it is. In fact, Terry Shore from, um, urban growth, you know, regarding urban, urban growth boundary said, there's an architect that's going to be visiting Sonoma that's looking for that type of, uh, um, you know, opportunities. And I have to try to remember where it is. They're, they're not cottages. I, I will say they're very beautiful homes, but right in the middle of those homes is a park. So, and I can't remember where. Somebody will, maybe we'll have to rent a plane and fly over or something, but I'm going to try and find out. And I really love that concept because I think it creates a neighborhood, which I think is really, which is really valuable. And I really appreciated this, um, you know, the community hall, the town hall meetings because they were simplified. They weren't, you know, high-end sophisticated and let's figure this out and let's write those numbers, the things that we have to listen to. So I really appreciated it and, uh, and I thought to hold on to that many people is pretty, you know, is, is really great. And you came highly recommended. So, um, I'm just really pleased it all worked out. And I especially thank Logan and, uh, Rachel for doing that, for bringing that to us and present, having it presented in a way that people can really understand. So hopefully this is just the beginning of what we'll, we're going to be doing. And I think I mentioned to Kathy today, the first poster child now for some bad housing plans is the city of San Bruno. And there, they are going to be, they're in trouble, aren't they? Because they've done, they have a huge development that they didn't approve and, uh, so the state has already come down on them. So no longer Huntington Beach, now it's San, city of San Bruno.
Um, thank you to everyone. Reiterate the thank yous. Uh, uh, you know, some, the content of this work was great. You know, it wasn't just an overview, but it contained a lot of content, so I appreciated that. In terms of the next steps, um, I am interested, uh, in particular about the deed restricted units we have that are about to sunset or some already have. I think that's something that we might want to work on right away, um, because that would be such a tremendous loss. Um, and I do think that in terms of planning, that having an inventory of available sites, um, and some more specifics about what we actually have that could be developed or where redevelopment needs to take place, um, would be really helpful. And I talked to the city manager about that today. But in the absence of some specifics about what we actually have right now, it's hard to make concrete plans about how we might improve those things. But, um, I think this was great and there was a lot of, um, terminology. I know in my own practice of law, whenever I meet with somebody about a novel topic, I force them to let me give them a 101 about the topic for 10 minutes so that when we're talking, we're sure we're talking about the same thing. Because so often when you don't do that, it turns out you're actually talking about two different things and the people don't know what the words you're using mean. And so I think having a baseline, uh, terminology is super important, um, and a good thing to do. So thank you very much. And with that, I think that's it for this item, correct?
Yes, we just want to, this is just to receive the report and we'll be coming back.
Wonderful, thank you. Now, on to the latest, the greatest, item 6.2. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding designation of the city of Sonoma voting delegate for the 2019 League of California Cities Annual Conference. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'll make this very brief. This is something that we do each year. Um, it comes before you prior to the annual conference that the league puts on usually in September, October. The city is a member of the League of California Cities and the league itself is an association of the majority of the cities in California. And they work together so that they can influence the policy decisions that affect the cities as a whole. Each year again, that, uh, the league holds their conference. This year it is in Long Beach in October, um, October 16th through the 18th. It is a requirement that the, uh, council officially designate a voting delegate for the business meeting that takes place on Friday of that meeting. If they so desire to have a vote or to have someone attend. At this time, we have not received the resolutions, um, if any will be considered at that meeting, but those will be coming back before you upon receipt to a consideration for your direction.
Is anyone planning on going to that meeting?
At this time, well, the meeting, I don't know. At this time, three of the council members have signed up for the conference. And so then that would be a discussion, I believe. A couple travel plans may not coordinate with that, um, but that's a discussion for you.
So at this point, Mayor Harrington, um, we have, uh, Vice Mayor Harvey has signed up, Councilmember Agarante and Councilmember Hunley are signed up to go to the conference.
Well, and I'm pretty sure that the only eligible person is Madeline. We haven't asked if you're going to be able to attend because our flights won't go. Oh, in the evening? It's an interesting, um, voted a couple years ago.
12:30 to 2:30 typically.
So... Are there like proxies? Does that mean that none of our, um, eligible people are going to be at that meeting?
Well, it depends if, um, Councilmember Agarante stays for the meeting.
Oh, it's at the end?
It's at the end of the conference. It's Friday, it's Friday afternoon, like sometime usually 12 to 2. It sounds like Madeline's flight is later. We could also change a council member's flight if, depending on what personal arrangements are, if someone wanted to stay. So, uh, really this is, um, I know Councilmember Agarante represented the city last year, I believe.
Well, what are, we'll, let's do this. I'll open it up for public comment, we'll close it, then we can talk about it. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Is there anybody who would like to serve in this position? Madeline, would you like to do it?
I don't, if I'm there, I can, you know, can do that. I mean, my flight is out at 5:00, so depending on...
I think that sounds good. It's, uh, probably the most realistic and then you can stay as long as you can. Sometimes they're fast, sometimes they're not, so.
I nominate Councilmember Agarante. Second, roll call.
Councilmember Cook?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Agarante?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madeline. All right, on to item 6.4. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding a request to schedule a council discussion by Councilmember Rachel Hunley to bring forward a council resolution related to child refugee detention camps. And I will turn it over to City Manager?
So this is similar to the last one we just dealt with. This is a two-step process. Councilmember Hunley is asked to put this on. And again, the question is, does the council, does the council want to, um, to have a discussion whether to bring forward, um, a resolution related to child refugee detention camps? So this one, I think, would almost be like a three-step. So you're saying now you want to agendize the conversation to have it. You would then have the conversation saying, yes, we want to bring this resolution. And then the third meeting is when the resolution would come based on our kind of process.
I don't know why the item that gets voted on can't be the resolution, a proposed resolution.
Looking at our city attorney in terms of the scope.
Well, I'm certainly hoping that, um, Councilmember Hunley has a form that she'd like to present to the council. That makes a lot of sense to me.
Great. Yeah, so it seems like the action item would just be to agendize the consideration of a proposed resolution.
Council's comfortable with that, that's fine.
Uh, and, I mean, at this point, uh, it's not often when we talk about national, issues of a national concern, but I know this is something that has, um, that a lot of people in town have a lot of strong feelings about. Uh, and I, you know, a couple of years ago, we did a resolution related, uh, related to , uh, human rights and inclusivity. And, uh, I just think it, that this issue is something that it would be good for the community, uh, to know where, you know, that we are together on this one. Uh, are there council questions? Seeing none, I will take it out to the public for public comment.
Fred Hollobach again, 195508 Street East. Um, I'm definitely in support of, of this particular, uh, resolution. And I'd like to add, along with the resolution, that the council might possibly consider what city investments were supporting banks that were paying for these detention, uh, camps. I know that the county is, uh, invested in that and, but apparently the county treasurer is somebody who's elected and the supervisors can't tell that where to invest the money. And so that if this person was to divest, then the county would lose money. And so you end up with a kind of Faustian bargain situation where you need to be investing in the very thing that you're making a resolution against in order to keep funding county and city operations. And so, um, I don't, I, I know that's certainly probably not a, not a great topic in an election year that people would want to, you know, have municipalities make less money for principled reasons. But anyway, I think it's worth a look that, you know, where the city's investments are and to kind of get those investments targeted so that they're not, you know, supporting, um, Exxon or detention camps or whatever and try to, uh, you know, get, get those aligned with the values of the city. And I also know that, that, you know, with Vanguard and other pla- Vanguard, I think, was founded by a Quaker guy. And I've seen stuff in the Quaker Friends Journal with them debating, you know, how they feel like they have the responsibility to earn money for their people, but at the same time, that some of that money is like destroying the rainforest. And so there's a place there somehow where, where things have to be made right. And I know the resolution is one thing, um, but actions are also really important. And I would hope that maybe that the council might want to look at that, you know, in whatever ways that could be done. Thank you.
Kelsa Barnett again. Um, I don't oppose the discussion of this item. Um, I would just like to note that Councilwoman Hunley mentioned that the last time you discussed a national issue was about two years ago. And I think that's about a good every two years perhaps. I just generally, on principle, don't, I'm not thrilled with the city council discussing national issues. And so I would urge caution and discretion moving forward to perhaps keep this to every two years, but this certainly seems like a, an issue, um, worthy of further discussion. And so I just wanted to state that I do not oppose it, your discussion of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. And, um, I can start. I absolutely support, uh, considering a resolution. I find the, um, images and discussions of these children, uh, kind of heart-wrenching and horrifying. And I don't know that signing a resolution is particularly effective, but I'm happy to have the discussion and do, do what we can.
I emphatically support having this discussion. I think it is important that small communities at times take stands on national issues. Um, I think it sends a signal, an official signal from a whole community, uh, what our values are. And, um, I think that Sonoma's values are against these detention centers where they are taking six-month-old babies and deporting their parents. So I think that it is important that we have this discussion and I think it is important that we, that we, you know, decide if we want to make a stand. Um, and I definitely support this measure.
Anyone else?
I feel very comfortable with this. In fact, I spoke to Councilmember Hunley about something more specific with respect to criminality and, um, on the resolution, but possibly we're just going to stay very general. The difference between cr- criminal charges and civil charges has a lot to do with why they separate children from their parents and because they're being charged with a criminal act, not a civil act, this is why, what allows them to do that. So this is just a general statement, which I think is still very valuable.
Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I sort of, uh, I support the discussion.
Great. Uh, okay, I make a motion to agendize this matter.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Agarante?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye. And just to be clear, the matter is the consideration of a resolution drafted by Councilmember Hunley.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks.
Item seven, council member reports and comments.
Let's see, I attended, where is it? The Zero Waste Symposium at Somerville. Oh, you were there also. Somerville, I thought it was pretty interesting. Um, and our vice mayor actually said he would follow up on a couple of things that we discovered that other cities were doing and we weren't. So I appreciate you taking the lead on that. Um, I thought it was a great, I thought it was a, a great, uh, symposium and, um, there was a lot of information and really a lot of well-informed people. And, um, I was happy about that. I was supposed to attend the Health Action Committee, but I have to be honest, I'm sort of a disgruntled attendee and, um, with that, and I wanted to some way bring up the issue that our authority has been usurped by the Health Action Committee and they have sort of moved on what they believe Sonoma is all about. And I'm pretty annoyed by that. So, um, that's possibly something we can discuss in the future.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey?
I was also at the Waste Zero Summit, Zero Waste Summit. Um, I thought it was fantastic. A lot of really good conversations about whether or not composting facilities should be accepting PLA plastic, which is not break down in a long, uh, short enough period of time to actually be accepted. So there was kind of an interesting thing where you had, uh, some, some, uh, sponsors at the event that are heavily invested in this, kind of going against other sponsors of the event that are composters. And that was a really interesting discussion. Uh, beyond that, learned a lot about what the county's doing, uh, and about a state bill that's going to be coming up, uh, in 2022, which would put, um, local businesses at risk of a $50 per day fine if they're not, uh, correctly composting, recycling and things like that. So it's a, it's a lot of things coming up the pipe with, um, waste, zero waste and with recycling and composting and we really need to be on top of it.
No pun? Damn it. Put him on the spot. It was like, I'm...
Just trash today.
Anyone else? No, uh, city manager? Uh, city attorney?
Yes, just a quick one, uh, to bring the council up to date on the Jasper litigation. Uh, the council, uh, knows that Wednesday, uh, there was argument before Judge Wick, uh, over the city's demur. A demur is a, is a paper that's filed to test the legal validity of a lawsuit. And you, when you file a demur, you are assuming the facts that are alleged in the lawsuit to be totally true. You're not conceding that they are. It's just, that's the basis of such a challenge. You're not challenging that John Doe went to, uh, city block Y. If that's alleged in the petition, you assume that's true. And then you move forward and argue to the court that even if it's all true, it doesn't make a valid claim. And that's what the city did here. It filed a paper claiming that the three theories advanced by, uh, Mr. Jasper, Jasper and his co-petitioners did not present a valid claim. As you remember, the first claim was a claim that the council's denial of the project based upon SEQA was wrong. It was not supported by evidence in the record. The second claim was that the council violated the Housing Accountability Act by using standards that were not objective. And thirdly, that the council denied, uh, Mr. Jasper a fair hearing because of extra hearing evidence that was exchanged allegedly and the, uh, mayor's gathering down one of the speakers. And the city filed a paper saying that none of those claims were valid. The court agreed as to claims one and two, but, but did find that the due process claims were certain enough because the city's challenge to the due process unfair hearing claims was that the allegations were uncertain, that the legal basis was not clearly articulated. The court did not agree with the city's position on that and let that particular claim move forward. But the first two, the one based on SEQA and the one based on the Housing Accountability Act, the court ruled that the city's position was correct and as pled, did not state valid claims. Uh, that means, uh, that the petitioners, Mr. Jasper and his co-petitioners have a period of time to file a next, a new lawsuit, a new petition to amend their claims, their pleadings, their factual and other statements found in this document, to change them, to modify them, to try to avoid the court's rulings. We think that's going to be fairly difficult. Uh, and we're likely, when we get the new lawsuit, generate, uh, the basis to file another demur, probably a very similar to, uh, the demur that was filed against the first petition. But we're not there yet. Uh, the petitioners have a period of time to file a new petition. And when, uh, they do, we will come back to the council with further, uh, instructions or, or requests for instructions as to, as to what to do next.
Thank you very much. And with that, the meeting's adjourned.